Just for the public who might be listening, the meeting was already opened and we needed to get the video set up. I had already made comments about the meeting being recorded in the Pledge of Allegiance. So I welcome everybody tonight and thank you for those who came here to have to wait for the executive session, which we did keep as briefly as possible. We have two sad notes tonight. We recognize the passing of James W. Coyne Jr. I think everybody in town knew Jim. And what I didn't realize, I knew he had been a Board of Selectment member from 2011, 2012, but his resume is exemplary. ADA Transition Plan Committee, the Cable Advisory Committee. I noticed that was like six years. Capital Improvement Planning Committee, Community Preservation Committee, the Personnel Board for six years, the Route Six Advisory Task Force, the Tax Incentive Committee, the Veteran Service Agent Search Committee in 2011, the Wage and Classification Study Committee, and the Westport Economic Development Task Force. I knew Jim and I'd see him every year, twice a year at least, either at Memorial Day or at Veterans Day at the cemetery where he would be part of the commemoration. And he was always a gentleman and a great guy. He's served in the Vietnam War and he was a great friend of all of us and a great man in the town of Westport. I know other people know Jim and may want to say something.
Yeah, I put a little thing on my Facebook recognizing too. He was, he used to call me cousin because one of his long-lost relatives married one of my long-lost relatives. So it was always fun to interest him. He had some great ideas when he was on Board of Selectmen, like when the Powerball was high, he said the town should invest in buying a bunch of Powerball tickets to solve all our worries. You know, very dry humor sometimes. When we had the Route Six Task Force, he really pushed for Kentucky Fried Chicken. And then when we went to the Forum for it, I said, all right, who wants the Kentucky Fried Chicken? And he never said a word, but he wanted it on a list to have it. So it was amusing working with him. He showed up to everything, even election nights and everything. He'll be solidly missed. I brought him to the last town meeting we had at the high school, so we got to reminisce a little. So again, he was a fixture in town, like so many this year, unfortunately, he'll be missed.
I have to say, the election nights are never going to be the same again in Westport. That was truly an honor to be invited and to watch all the guests. He had just had such a rapport with so many people. And then also all the work he did for Ataxia and making sure that we recognize Ataxia, getting the word out. He did a really good job, not just for the town of Westport, for that cause also. He's a really good guy. My prayers are with the family.
Any further comments? Again, our condolences and prayers to the family of James W. Coyne Jr. We also acknowledge the passing of Shirley Vieira, who is the spouse of former Select Board member and Chairman Anton Vieira. I do not know much about Shirley. I've met her only a couple of times. Looking at the obituary, I could see she had an extensive background and she was an accomplished person in her own right, you know, a lot of educational involvement, teaching and so on and so forth. So our condolences to Tony and his family. Any other comments? Anybody know Shirley?
She was another one that was very busy with the schools, especially when she was there and obviously with Tony and a lot of events. So another person that did a lot in town.
Okay. Anything else? Are there any other acknowledgements? Okay.
I would like to acknowledge the birthday of Steve Belet.
No cake?
I didn't bring a cake because I forgot about it.
How does it feel to be a year older?
Sixty. Over the hill.
And the passing of my mother.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry about that.
I can go and sit to you if you want.
The highs and lows of these meetings, you never know except on that. Sorry.
Okay. I guess we can continue on with the regular business. The first item, really the second item after executive session, where public hearings, there is one, and this is pursuant to MGL Chapter 40, Section 56, Discussion with the Assessors for the Percentage of Local Tax Levy to be borne by each class of property for fiscal year 2024. Invite Steve to come over.
Steve Menes, Chairman of the Board of Assessors. You all got a handout here. It's up there on the board if you need to look at it. We'll start comparing fiscal 2024 to 23. Maximum levy went up about 4%. New growth was actually down a little bit from 847,000 to 679, but a big part of that 847 last year was the solar fields up the street. That was almost 100,000. So new growth really isn't that much. It says 24%, but it really wasn't that much. If you took out that, that one solar farm, you know, it'd be like 747 versus 679. So it was still quite a bit of building going on. Values went up. All values went up. If you take a look at the next line down, they went up right around residential, they went up around 10%. Commercial went up around seven, personal property around six. So right around the average set out, it went up right around 10% all over the place. The average single-family value in a house in Westport today is about $596,000, which is an increase of 9.5%. The rate did drop. If you look, last year's rate was $8.16. Since the values of all properties had gone up, it brought the rate down to 773, which is one of the lowest rates you'll find in the state, probably in the bottom 25 out of the 351, I believe, communities in the town, in the state. So if you look at the percentages, residential class is still mining 2.2%, the commercial, industrial, 5.1%, and personal property, 2.7%. So the Board feels that we should stay with the single tax rate as we have in the past. Nothing's really changed, you know, to do the shift on the, over to the commercial and the industrial property would be a big burden to the small mom-and-pop stores that we have in our, in our community.
I have a question, Steve. I see the average tax bill increase is 3.8%.
Mm-hmm.
And do you recall what it was last year?
How much it went up last year?
Yes.
Last year, I think about 5% or something.
Okay. And what would be the reason for the average bill going up only by that much? It seems modest.
Still paying for the schools, you know, basically is what the increase is coming from.
Yeah.
Is the payment on the school. Like I say, with the values going up, it brought the rate down a little bit, not to say everybody's went up 10%, some people might go up 15, 20%. It all depended on sales in the neighborhoods and as historically, the south end values are generally higher than they are in the north end. Waterfront properties stay strong, they continue to stay strong. So those people would, you know, those waterfront properties might see a higher percentage than the 10%. People in the north end might see a lower percentage. That's an average, the 9.5.
Questions from the Select Board?
I know you said it, but because we get asked this question a lot, can you talk a little bit more about why you're not recommending a separate tax rate for commercial versus residential?
We really don't have any big businesses in town. Most of the big, most of the businesses we have in this town are mom-and-pops, you know, small car lots, garages, variety stores. You know, we only have a few, really only one chain store in the entire town, you know, CBS. And they're really not a really big employer. Probably the biggest employer in town maybe be Lee's Market. But you know, what you can shift on the commercial end would raise their taxes up quite high. And like I say, being most of them are mom-and-pop stores, you can't pick and choose which ones you want to do the commercial rate with. Once you go to the commercial rate, all commercial businesses are involved. And you know, these are, these are the businesses that give our kids their first jobs and sponsor our little league teams. And I think our, our commercial properties in town do a lot for our town. And I think it would be a big burden on them to make the shift personally. And that's how the Board feels.
I just want to underline that, that only, according to this, only 5% of our tax base is commercial industrial. So for it to make any kind of difference on the residential taxpayer would be a huge burden on the commercial.
It's not going to make a difference. You take some areas where, you know, where it might be 30, 40%. If you make that shift, it'll bring the residential, you know, down quite a bit. But with only 5% of that income coming in, it does affect them quite a bit, but it's really not going to affect the residential person that much.
And then also just, I know you know this, but we say it again, it does not change the total levy. There is no increase to the town if you do that. It's, the levy is the levy.
The levy is the levy. And levy is, you know, basically that's how we come up with the tax rate. We take up what we feel our town is worth, we divide that into the levy, and there's your rate. So with the values going up, the rate come down.
Thank you.
Any further questions from the Select Board? This is a public hearing, so comments from the public are welcome. Anybody wishes to speak? Just, I was going to say, come to the, to the microphone.
No, that's okay. Not that many people, but I don't know if it's worth setting up. What do you need for motion, Jim? I forgot.
So we look to the Board to recommend, the Board approved the tax factor of one.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, if they're saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. The motion carries. Jim, five in favor and none opposed. Is there anything else?
No. So like I say, the average tax rate this year will be $7.73,000, which is down from 8.16. Probably about the lowest I've seen in the last 20 years or so. Of course, the highest values do, but probably the lowest rate I've seen in my almost 30 years being on the Board. All right, thank you.
All right. The next area would be appointments and resignations. A is a request from Deputy Police Chief John Bell to accept his letter of retirement effective January 6, 2024. Jim, some comments on this? We all know Officer Bell pretty much here.
He's just, he's been on the force for a long time. He's done a great job over there. It's going to be missed. Retired at the same time as the chief on January 6.
I said officer, I should have said deputy chief, John Bell.
Yeah. John came through the ranks. It's a shame to see him go, but I'll move with regrets, send him a nice letter.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. That passes.
All right, I do have a question.
Please.
Do we need to post this position or is the, the police department handles them differently, right?
I think we're going to have to discuss it with the new chief because of the budgets.
It's a good question. I will follow up with you. Get back down there.
Thank you. If I couldn't, I should. Yeah, I remember when Chief Bell came on, they had to wait a while because of budget issues, remember? So we'll have to see what's going on, how he's going to work his budget.
Yeah, I just wasn't sure. I said, no, we have to do the appointments, but I don't think we usually do the postings for that. I think there's a separate mechanism for the police department.
In-house stuff, yeah.
Yeah.
Just runs it through the town administration, make sure he's doing it right and so on.
All right, you can get back to us.
I'll get back down there.
Thank you. Okay. Well, we do wish him the best. John's a good, a good guy. Three B is a request from the Infrastructure Oversight Committee to reappoint Joseph Amaral to the committee. Jim, and we have representatives here.
Yeah, yeah, it's just, I believe in oversight that he didn't get put on. He's been coming to the meetings, he just couldn't vote the last meeting and the meeting before. So if we could just, I'll move that we put him on.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. It also passes. Five in favor, none opposed. Jim, if you're taking notes. The third of the appointments and resignations is C, a request from the Energy Committee to appoint Brian Valkord, former Selectman Brian Valkord, to the committee. This could be controversial, right?
I'll move it.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. My comment is, I was once on the Energy Committee. We've had people, had a problem getting people to serve on this committee.
Yeah.
So I'm really happy that Brian is able to do that. Okay, motion made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. The motion carries unanimously. Next area is licenses and permits. The first is A, a request to approve the previously held permits. There's only, really only one, and that's Bayside Restaurant for a common vitualler and liquor license. Jim?
Yes, so the Board approved all the license renewals. There were a couple that were put on hold. This was one of it, one of them. They did resolve the issue. I believe they were waiting for something from the Board to help. Not 100% sure on that, that's my understanding, but according to Paula, it's ready to be approved.
Okay. Yeah, I think there was concern expressed that the, the operation, which was very successful, had expanded to more like a restaurant, which was not the original intent. But I think you covered that with them, so I'm satisfied with that.
I'll move it.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, if they're capable, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Again, same votes, five in favor, none opposed. The next item B is a request from Robert J. Damaris. I hope I pronounced that correctly. Doing business as Damaris Auto Wrecking in parts to amend the Class III Motor Vehicle Junk License at 560 Highland Avenue. If you're free to come forth, let's ask the town administrator to make any introductory comments.
Yes, there is a condition that's been on his license for a number of years, 20-plus years, which states that all vehicles to be stored in the original licensed premises area and not expanded to the abutting lot that fronts on Old Bedford Road. Does Damaris, Damaris want to address the Board and see if you could get that condition waived? I'll remove.
Feel free to speak.
Okay. Well, first of all, I got to know who I'm talking to. How many years have you been living in town?
Since 2011, but I've owned property since 1993.
Hey, where did you come from? Where we reside before moving to Westport?
Well, I lived in eight different places. The last stop was in the Boston area in the town of Sudbury.
Boston. Steve, same question.
Sixty Westport, all my life. Ten Westport, thirty Dartmouth, and then I grew up in Somerset. Mini sauce.
When did you move into Westport?
Ten years ago. Ten years ago.
I'm sorry.
Ten.
Ten?
I've been here 21 years.
Seventy-nine?
Twenty, I've been here 21 years. I moved here in 2002.
Twenty-nine?
Born and raised.
Twenty?
No, I've been here forever. Not twenty, fifty-five.
You made a lady till her age. Oh, boy.
Wow. We got the ages of two people on the record today.
Yeah.
Let me read my statement for this. Can I ask any questions? I do have a lot of material here, facts and stuff that pertain to what I want. Do you know what a grandfather rights are? Explain. Example, motor vehicle seatbelt laws today are mandatory in effect. Motor vehicles manufactured without seatbelts prior to the law are exempt from this law. That is a grandfather right. My father's original application is the only one ever submitted for his license with the town of Westport in 1958. This is a contractual agreement for an operation of a Class III license on this property. I received those rights when I purchased this business and real estate from my father under my father's original application. The town renewed my license, my Class III license, every year without filing a renewal form until 1988. That year, the restriction was put on my Class III license by the Selectmen. My pre-zoning grandfather rights were violated. May 5, 1983, I received a letter from the Board of Selectmen to bring an attorney to the meeting, and they were going to revoke, suspend, or modify my license. At that meeting, the Selectmen said that the neighbors had a right to go down Highland Avenue and not look at that eyesore. I told the Selectmen that I was worried about what my neighbors thought about my business. I gave them a copy of a petition on that weekend, on, that, on that weekend before, I had the neighbors read and sign it. The petition stated that they didn't mind the way I operated my business or the way it looked. I received over eighty-five, 65 signatures on that petition. Two of the Selectmen were not happy. No junkyard in Westport has ever had support from the neighborhood like I received. My father's fifth day was issued a Class III license until this very day. Not one stolen item ever entered my property. Yes, I have a perfect record. Other junkyards in town do not have this type of history. What would a Selectman do if a business selling or serving alcohol to a minor? Revoke, suspend, modify, or fine the business? Mid-City Scrap, about four years ago, bought $100,000 worth of stolen silver from an employee of Polaroid of Wareham. What action did you take, the Selectmen take, on this situation? Nothing. No one lost their job? The company was not fined or shut down? Mid-City Scrap paid for a parking lot at the Mackambe School and also gave them a steel beam. I guess that took care of the problem. In the past, I've had my business shut down for two weeks because I had an eyesore. I didn't think that an eyesore was a major crime. This is, is this equal treatment by the Board? I have the right to display what I have to sell like all other business in town. Some of the vehicles need some kind of repairs and don't look like new vehicles, but they are for sale with needed repairs. Businesses have been displaying what they are selling for thousands of years in front of their properties. This is common practice for every business. This Board took 82% of my real estate for junk cars off of my Class III license. This Board allowed a Mid-City to expand their business with two different lots on State Road a mile from the original property. This Board allows companies to expand and grow, to expand and grow, but small businesses are thrown under the bus and harassed with their selective enforcement of their rules. This is a violation of my civil rights. On April 4, 1995, I acquired a junk collector's license to buy old metal, second-hand articles. Under this license, I can buy junk vehicles. This license has no restrictions on it, and I can put junk vehicles on any part of my real estate, which makes the restriction on my Class III null and void. I have had this license for 28 years and continue to renew it every year. I got this license because I was always included, I've always included picking up scrap metal from properties and customers in Westport and surrounding communities. In 28 years that I have had this license, not one complaint has ever been filed or actually taken by the zoning board. I received this license from the town clerk, not the Selectmen's office. The zoning board has never addressed the issue of this license, which has made public notice in the annual town report for 28 years. The statute of limitation on this, on the use of this license, of which the zoning board has to act on, has six years, has long passed. The zoning RE 16, RC 13, zoning and building codes, Section 6, states that. I am also a Vietnam veteran. The only thank you I received for being a veteran came from the state of Massachusetts. I received a check of $250. Illegal migrants today entering the United States receive free transportation anywhere in the country, a phone, food, housing, education, and a medical plan that I have to pay for with my taxes. What a country. We reward those who violate our laws and restrict law-abiding citizens who have to pay and increase taxes for your poor judgments. This office put the restriction on my Class III. This Board can and should remove the restriction from my license. When the Board members agree to my request, I expect, as a veteran who put his life on the line for this town and its citizens, a thank you for the commitment I made a long time ago. Yes, I am one of the less than 1% of the country's population that protect our citizens I just, yeah, I got a standard type, maybe here from 1956, when my father came to the Selectmen's meeting and A and B license was transferred to my father's license. And it stated that transfer of auto-licensed junkyard from A and B Wrecking Company, Highland Avenue, to Albert J. Damaris Milk Avenue, junkyard is to, to remain at its present location. You notice there's no number on Highland Avenue before zoning. Zoning came to this town in 1959. A and B first logged, I didn't keep one for myself, but A and B first logged the first car they bought, April 7, 1956. And their last car that they logged in was September 27, 1957. My dad's first vehicle he bought, logged in, January 9 of 1958, so he was just issued that license. And December 16, 1964, that's when I first logged on a vehicle, and that was under my father's license because I wasn't issued a license for December. I came to the Selectmen's office, they told me, use my father's license, and I was issued a license for January 1, 1965. Now, this business has been started long before zoning ever came into town and has That is my junk collector's license when I first picked it up. April 4. April 4th, 1995. That is a zoning law. They issued you five copies there?
Yeah, if there is.
If you have noticed the grandfather clause. Zoning laws are not retroactive. And you can't pass a zoning law to restrict my business. And that's been the problem right along, violation of my pre-zoning grandfather rights.
Is all your materials?
And? I've been harassed since 1970, when neighbors started moving in. Even recently. I got a phone call, I was in the garage, May 6th, 2021. Lucy Tabor. I picked up the phone, Damaris Auto Record. This is Lucy from the selectman's office. You're working today? Yes, I'm working today. She abruptly hung up. Checking upon me to see if I am in business. I'm there six days a week. Does she have to call to check upon me? Is this a reason for harassment? So I started logging. When I'm near the phone in the garage and when I'm in the office. It's a one-man business. I'm not sitting on the phone waiting for a call. I've got an answer machine 24/7. If you want to call right now, it will, it will pick up. Yes, that's, that's all, all one copy.
What are we, what are you pointing out in this, sir?
Sorry?
What are you pointing out in this?
What am I pointing out is I'm being continued to be harassed with something that should never have been done. I want this restriction taken off. I proved that the junk collector's license made it null and void. And also with the zoning law, I proved that you're in violation of my pre-zoning grandfather rights. And I have a right to expand also.
Is this the blue garage on Highland Avenue?
Yes, it is, yes.
Now, are you looking to, like, expand behind the garage? It says Befford Road, does the land come out onto Old Befford Road too?
It goes out to the old Befford Road. Now, when I purchased all this real estate, the zoning there was unrestricted. The three lots that I purchased did not meet zoning requirements. As a matter of fact, that nine-acre lot, selectman attorney Rick Dischardens deeded that by, he subdivided it by deed. And the planning board registered it with the registration of deeds in Dubeford that it was an unbillable lot. State statute, any lot that is unbillable, and if it's attached to a legal, zoned, billable lot, becomes one lot, even though there's more than one deed. All three lots I bought did not meet zoning requirements. While the zoning was unrestricted. Unrestricted zoning is any legal business. I was issued that license, and I bought that nine-acre lot in 95. I was issued my license for 560 Highland Avenue, no restrictions. And 86, likewise, with no restrictions. And in 87, with no restrictions. After they changed the zoning, and that was on April 3rd, 1987, at the meeting, we had a long discussion about changing that zoning unrestricted. Rick Dischardens, former selectman, also an attorney, stood up and said, "I have grandfather rights, that's public notification." Violated. Now, what are you guys going to do?
We just get some clarification, sir? So the property you acquired in 1995, we have a map in here, so I'm looking at that now. And that goes back behind some houses and comes out in this, that's old Befford Road.
Goes on 4440 on the old Befford Road.
Yeah. On the map, is it a line? I guess that's probably demarking where you have your business now. I was just, I don't know, I don't know if you put the line in there or who did, but I just wanted to be sure I'm looking at the right property.
Well, they said I couldn't put cars on here, but I got tireless, that's part of my license.
So when was it that, I guess it was the select board, in your words, took away those grandfather rights? What was the year again? 1995? When you purchased, yeah. When you purchased the lots, I'm trying to, I'm asking, I think you covered this.
I purchased that nine-acre lot. Actually, I purchased a one-acre lot right behind the original lot in 1972. That nine-acre lot I purchased in 1985. And that three-and-a-half-acre lot I purchased in January of 1987.
But you bought those lots, understanding you had unrestricted?
It was unrestricted zoning. The April 3rd, 1987, is when it came up to the town meeting to change the area to, from unrestricted to residential. I had bought all those lots before it was advertised on a zoning change. And it all became one lot because they don't meet zoning requirements, and it's attached to the original lot that I bought my dad. They're all continuous.
But when was it that, was it at the town meeting that it was changed?
When they put that restriction on? That was 1988.
And was that by select board or town meeting?
That was a selectman, selectman meeting. That was Ron DeRozia and Bill Pomerodan, and I forget the third one.
You recall what their rationale was for restricting, removing the restriction?
Yeah, political.
Political meaning?
Political agenda. Please, the neighbors, every time I've come in front of this board, this board agreed that I was there first. There was nobody there when A&amp;B started the business, when my dad bought the business, and when I bought the business. No electricity, no telephone, until May 12th, 1968. I had put a mobile home on my property that summer of '67, and I moved in October '67. I generated my own electricity during that whole winter season. May 12th, the electricity came in. May 13th, Army National Guards activated. I was in convoy, headed to Fort Benning, Georgia. And the 14th, the telephone came in. That's how I started the neighborhood. And there was absolutely nobody there on both sides of the roads. From around the corner on Old Befford Road and the Bejewels Farm on the Dartmouth side on Deerfield Lane. All the rest was totally woods. And I had to pay for those poles from Deerfield Lane to my place because the Dubeford Electric had to charge me for putting the poles up. When I got out for the service, July 22nd, 1969, poles were already past me, and there was already houses built on the Westport side. The Gamash House and the Moss House. 1970, they started building across the street in Dartmouth. I was approached by one of the realtors. They want to put up a new fence in front of my property so I could hide my vehicles. I told them, "Thanks, but no thanks. I want people to see that I'm here because if they don't mind a junkyard, I got a good neighbor. If I hide my stuff and a person comes in here and they want to build a junkyard, we got a battle going on." From that point on, I've been called into this office because I had eyesore. And I asked, "Who's complaining?" Well, Rick Dischardens said, "He's complaining." I was never told who the complaints are. Rick lives the South End of Westport.
Oh, he lives over at the Coke's Club, actually. But I thought you said Mr. Dischardens pointed out at a selectman meeting that the property was unrestricted.
That's right, that's right. At that meeting, when the zoning was changed, he made a statement that I have grandfather rights, that's public notice.
And was that that meeting that?
It was at that town meeting, in front of everyone.
Oh, a town meeting, I'm sorry. I thought it was a support meeting, yeah. If, go ahead.
So I have, I just have a couple of questions. So I think that the topic on the table right now, you have, you currently have a Class 3 motor vehicle junk license. So you currently have one and you're operating, doing business with a Class 3 motor vehicle license. I think the issue before us is whether we will amend that license to include an area that was not previously, that should include an area that the town of Westport has suggested that you don't have, right? So you're asking us to amend the license to include this other part of the property.
So your question?
My question is, that's the issue before us right now, right?
I, I was issued a Class 3 license in 85.
No, the one you issued last year, what were you issued in 2022?
Listen to me, please. In 1985, 1986, and 1987, with no restrictions on it, which meant I had one lot.
I appreciate that you're contesting this.
When I buy these lots, okay, if they don't meet zoning requirements, it becomes one lot. I don't care if I got four or 10 deeds.
So let me continue. So that's the issue before us, is whether we should amend this license to include that additional area. You're believing that we shouldn't have to amend it. You believe that that's the way it should be already and that it shouldn't require amendment. But what we're having right now is, you're asked, we're being asked to amend it. I think the problem that we have here is this is not in our scope of authority to decide a zoning issue. We have a judgment from the building inspector that this is zoning. The zoning enforcement officer, please let me speak. The zoning enforcement officer has deemed this zoning violation. So I think that the proper board to appeal the zoning officer decision is the zoning board of appeals. So what you're asking us to do is amend the license and ignore the zoning decisions that have already been made. And so I'm trying to understand, I appreciate that your argument seems to be that it never should have been that way in the first place.
If that will correct the problem, yes.
I'm just trying to understand our scope of authority here. I don't think we have the authority to make a zoning decision.
It's, it's the board that put it on. And when Vernon Whitehead, who did not like me at all, put that on, that we said that I violated the zoning. I did not violate zoning because I was given my license prior to his decision.
So I appreciate that your position is you're not, you didn't violate it, your grandfather did. But we also have a series of town council over the years advising us that it was consistent. So this has become before the town before with the legal entities. And they, you know, maybe the, again, I think, I'm confused about what our scope of authority is here. If we amended this license, I don't think we have the authority to change the zoning decision. Is that right?
Well, I think it is. I was going to ask a question to that effect, what you've beaten to it.
Yeah, sorry, okay.
But you don't have any plans either.
Yeah, so I'm finding it difficult to ask, to act in your favor, although I'm sympathetic to your argument because I don't think I have the authority to do that. I think the proper authority to issue a zoning change or zoning decision is the zoning board of appeals. And I, from one, am uncomfortable extending and making amendments to a license that is in violation of the zoning board.
Yes. I went to court on that issue, okay? My lawyer and Rick Dischardens were good friends. And when Rick got on a stand in 1984, he came to my place right after I gave him that petition. And he asked me if I could move my stuff back further. I said, "No, I can't." Says, "Is there more land to buy? Because if you've got more land to buy, I've got his blessing." He and Ann Chandon, he was there. George Leach wasn't there. When we went to court, Rick lied twice on the stand because I got the deposition of the court trial. He lied twice. He did not say that he told me to buy more land, I had his blessings. Okay? While zoning was unrestricted. Unrestricted zoning is any legal business. And expansion is part of any legal business. Unrestricted. That's my issue here. It was unrestricted, and I was legally, I could expand, just like Mid City's doing.
Well, Mid City had the junk for all the hoops. You haven't shown us a plan yet. So you look at the plans, you look at the expansion. It's just not automatic when they bought a piece of property. So that's the problem we got to look.
Back in the day, there were no, you did not issue any plans for expansion, okay? You just did it.
Right. That was in the 50s, but when it gets to the 80s and 90s, you needed a plan. That's what, that's, I think, what we need to figure out.
I don't think so because under the unrestricted zoning, that's automatic.
Well, all our other licenses either, I don't know. No, we've never inspected your property, correct, recently, last 20 years? So that's what I mean. It's tough to say without even doing an inspection that you would get the automatic. We always, we always get a plan. The building inspector, the zoning inspector walks the property. That's the part I don't understand is why we don't even have a basis.
That's how you do it today.
Yeah.
You didn't do that when I bought that property. That was never done.
Yeah.
Okay. So you're forcing your zoning laws on me retroactive because I've got pre-zoning grandfather rights unrestricted, which means I can expand my business. And that's right there in the law.
Well, that's what we have to figure out. I don't, it's automatic, but I didn't.
That's why I brought the law in.
I mean, I'm looking, you know, like, instead of denying his request, could we continue until he brought up before the ZVA? Because I think you need to go before the ZVA with this request versus giving him with denial, and then he's got to go to the ZVA.
Is it to the point where we can decide now?
It's up to the board, the board doesn't, he's requesting it so the board can.
Now, the junk collector's license, I can put junk cars on that property.
But you need a plan to do that. I had a junk license, and I had to put a plan. I had to show all the houses.
When did you get it?
It was fairly recent, like 20 years ago.
Yes, yes. I've had it since 1995, when I picked it up from the town clerk. It was a $5 license. Anybody, anybody could, yeah, it's $30. Anybody could get that license.
But then they, yeah, but they changed, I don't, I don't have the stuff in front of us. But they changed it, that's why I got rid of it. It was too much work, it wasn't worth it.
Right, right, they changed it. And the fact that they changed it also makes my zoning And the fact that they changed it also makes my zoning difficult to explain because under my great, my pre-zoning grandfather rights, okay, you cannot retroactively take a zoning of today and force it on me.
I know, I'm kind of getting, I'm sorry.
That's in the law.
Good chair. Well, there's, there's no doubt that you have pre-existing non-conformal use. The expansion, you know, at that point, it becomes, I think the burden of proof becomes on, on you, the proof that the expansion is not, is less detrimental to the neighborhood. So, so.
Now, 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 wait a minute.
One second. I don't think you're gonna, I don't think, by expanding in the back, that it could be considered less detrimental. I, I think by expanding towards the back, it might not be.
Okay, I know where you're going.
That's not a decision for us.
I know where you're going. I know where you're going, okay? I did not move to the neighborhood. The neighborhood moved to me. And a good example, Rosaline Acres, Madera's Pig Farm, they tried to get him out. He was grandfather, okay? I'm grandfather. The neighbors, the neighbors got their American dream.
I get a lot of the subdivisions.
The neighbors got their American dream, right? They got a nice piece of real estate, a nice house, a nice job, and a neighborhood with a junkyard in it. That's the American dream?
When was the, when was the last time that we actually had the building inspector out there to, to make a decision? Like, when was the last time that the building inspector actually ruled this is, this is in violation?
He's supposed to be doing like yearly or bi-yearly inspections, but he hasn't at the old place.
So, so I guess, I mean, I, I'm like you, Manny. I just think we're the wrong people to decide this. Because I think actually we'd be in trouble if we amended that license in disagreement with the zoning enforcement officer. I think that's, that would end up with a lot of problems here for us, because now you have two town ends, you're saying two different things. So I think we need to resolve, like, I don't know if we need to refer it to the ZBA? Do we need to refer it to the zoning enforcement?
Gee, I don't want to give you a denial here.
Yeah, I don't mean.
Vernon, Vernon Whitehead did not look into a property. Okay? Because my license was issued for three years on 15 acres for three years. Okay? And then they took it away from me.
So obviously, it needs to be homework done.
So what's the next, what's the status?
I agree, don't deny, just keep doing the research that he's claiming. He's throwing a lot of stuff out there.
I mean, the venue should be the ZBA. If the building inspector.
I think so. I was going to propose that the town administrator speak with our lord to gain agreement that that is the proper body to be hearing Mr. Demarest complain.
Get us like everything else. We, we give you plans and everything, like any other license we do.
Well, and then, I was going to go on to say, if that be the case, then, we direct it to the zoning board of appeals and the normal process would take place. It might be bothersome.
Yeah, yeah, all the neighbors are going to come in. Okay? We're going to have a big fiasco, all right? And I got to pay all this money out. You're, you're going to be putting me in a place that I don't want to be. Okay? The selectman did this damage. The selectman should fix this damage.
Well, it should have been fixed 40 years ago, to be honest with you. You're talking to a whole board.
Well, yes, I tried fixing it, but I'm, but I'm just banging my head against a stone wall. Okay? Now's the time I'm going to fix it.
Okay.
Okay?
All right, well, we need to get up to date. Most of the material in what you're talking about is over 40 years old, so we definitely need to get up to date. You know, the new rules, is there con con issues, blah, blah, blah? We got to go right down the line. So that's just normal, what we do for a license.
The grandfather clause explains it plain and simple.
That's probably where he'll start, is to make sure it's included in the grandfather clause. That's, that would be a good start. And like I say, I don't know why we don't have a plan. I, I think they've just been letting you do your thing. But when you go for expansion, you're going to show what you have now and what the limits are.
That's today's laws. Today's laws, okay? That's your rule today. Okay? That does not apply to a pre-zoning grandfather right, because you're going retroactive.
I got you.
Well, the zoning, the zoning, you, you may have an argument on the zoning, but other things have changed in 40 years also, like fire codes and safety codes.
You're using the zoning, you're using the zoning.
I, I'm just saying, somebody needs to go inspect and see if it meets all the other criteria that have changed over the years too, if that hasn't happened. But I, I think Dick's right. Like, I don't know if we need to refer to zoning, if we need to ask legal what's the right path, but I just don't think we're the right path. I think.
Yeah. Do you have a comment?
There's a, there's a thick file, right? Maybe it's, now, I had a lengthy conversation about a week ago or two weeks ago, and zoning is always interesting, and there's hundreds of cases that interpret zoning different ways. But based on what I was able to find in the file, it looks like the building inspector issued a denial way back. And you, you might.
Correct the court.
And then.
And I wasn't represented by.
Okay. And then it went to the zoning board, and the zoning board issued its decision saying that the expansion was an issue. And then the board of selectmen, their next license, they put the condition restricting it to be in conformance of what the zoning board said. So I think you're right. I think the best way, or maybe the only way to resolve it, is to send it back, and this is on your paper as well, it says the zoning enforcement officer is the enforcement agent for all zoning issues. So you really need to get it resolved, I think, with the zoning enforcement officer first. And if it's okay with zoning, then come back before the board and that condition can be resolved.
I'll have to talk to Ralph.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll talk to Ralph, and then we'll be back.
I don't think we have it. When was the court case lost?
The court case, I didn't see in the file. I just saw the, I have the decision from the zoning board.
I wasn't represented correctly.
December 1987.
Because my grandfather rights.
So it was 87, so everything was like 40 years ago. Okay. Well, let it get updated and see what the law is on now, to be honest with you.
But I think we don't have to take any action at all tonight.
Wouldn't deny it without proper, you know, backing and whatnot. By the way, thank you for your service to our country. Appreciate it.
Well, you know, it kind of gets me that this country today is going down in the tubes. Okay? For what I volunteered for and for the harassment I've been getting, I think I should go to Mexico, be a citizen, and come over to Rio Grande.
We're glad to have you here.
Yeah.
Thank you for being here tonight.
Also, I'm going to mention, my dad is on the board downstairs, World War II. He served in Europe. My brothers, Al, Norman, Paul, Roger, and myself are on the Vietnam board downstairs.
Definitely a pretty.
Five out of a family of 12.
Well, thank you. We hope to see you back again on more.
I will talk to Ralph and we'll see what can go on beyond that.
Thank you.
Because I had a tough time with Vernon Whitehead because he was involved with the owner of a real estate on the south side of my property. They were going to develop it, so he didn't want my junkyard in the area.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for having me.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, the next item is a request from the Yocoxa Club Incorporated and Yocoxa Club Incorporated doing business as the Pro Shop to accept the change of directors for 2024. There are three, from Michelle Carney to Patricia Barnes, Alicia Patterson to Mary Berg, and Marie Woolam to Elizabeth Opey. I don't think there's anybody here from the Yocoxa Club. I just want to say, in terms of disclosure, I was the former treasurer of Yocoxa Club, but that was now four or five years ago.
You folks are good people.
They're good people, and I did, however, call, these are routine changes, call today. I did speak with Ms. Cummings, who normally is here, and she couldn't make it tonight. And we went through this, and I'm totally satisfied with this, so.
I'll move it.
I'll second.
Motion made, and further discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The opposed, none, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Action items, number five, request to approve the energy, a request to approve the energy management services assessment agreement with banks, two Quan and Associates Incorporated. I think they're also referred to as B2Q. And I think there's material in our package. I've been involved with this, so I'm aware of it, but I'll ask you to tell us more about it.
Yes, so we received a grant to redo the HVAC system here at Town Hall with the grant and some utility incentives. It's about $600,000. In order to go through the procurement process for this, there's a special provision that allows you to hire a company to do a energy management type assessment of the building, and then they can go through the procurement process to get the work done. We sent out a request for qualifications, and we had, I think we had seven companies that applied for this. There was a group that interviewed them, interviewed three of the companies, and B2Q was chosen. And we finally got the contract prepared. It's been reviewed by KP Law, and I recommend the board approve and endorse the contract.
I'll move it.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded.
Just whoever does the, is involved with them, just make sure we have the proper controls, Jim, for the air turnaround. The problem with the energy savers is they're not, you've got to stay on top of it because they're trying to save energy instead of changing the airflow. So the airflow management's big with this. You want to make sure that's on, what kind of program they're going to.
Okay, any further discussion? Motion made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, none? Motion carries. Have you got that? Sure you do. Okay, thank you. The next item is 5B, the request to post a cemetery foreman position.
Yeah, the previous foreman was out of work for quite a long period of time. He did send in his letter of resignation, and I'd like to post the position. This is something that we need to get moving. We have a temporary reform in there now, and we'd like to post it in-house, let that position filled as soon as we can.
No changes to the job.
Is that a union position?
That is a union position.
So you're asking to post in-house?
In-house.
Move it.
I'll second.
And is that posting in-house consistent with union protocol?
Yes, we post for seven days.
Do you need approval to post out of that if you don't get anybody?
Yeah, I, I think if we do both, we save ourselves a trip.
Did I move it?
You amended it to include posting after?
Did you make the motion?
He did.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'll amend it then.
I'll amend it, so. So the amendment is, we're going to post it internally for the length of time, and if there are no applicants, then it can post publicly.
Yes, permission, pro quo, correct.
Yeah.
I think that's understood in the amended motion. Further discussion on the amended motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, none? The motion also carries unanimously. Let me just sign something, and I'll get on to the next item. Okay, that, that was item 5B. 5C, the request from Town Hall employees, this is big, attention, to hold a Christmas potluck luncheon on Wednesday, December 20th, and to close the town offices for an hour in order to participate in the luncheon. What is the pleasure of the?
I thought we did two hours last year.
I was going to say.
Because it gives time for the annex to get back and forth. I, I think the most that we grew up to two hours, the town administrator could help decide that.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion on that?
Just that they post it with enough time for the public, that's all.
Did the selectman get invited, Jim?
Certainly. Always invited.
Okay, that's not contingent upon the motion. Motion made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. Thank you. D, 5D is the request from Betty Slade and Robin Winters to replace the Mariners Lost at Sea Monument at Westport Point. So Robin Winters is here, is she going to wait for Betty?
Betty's coming from the annex, any minute, any second.
Can we pass over this one for a moment?
We can, we can hold for a bit.
Why don't we?
Just go to the next.
Yeah, just go to the next one.
Okay, we'll come back to that one.
Sorry. Or move to the Snell Creek, he's here.
Oh, yeah, that's a good idea. G, move to G.
Move to G, he's sitting here. He's been patiently waiting.
Don't you want to do the?
G.
G.
D, what's wrong? What, no.
Because he's here in the room, that's why we're trying to bump him.
No, I know, I know we want to postpone, but what about E? We don't want to do E?
Well, that might be a discussion. We're just trying to get.
We're trying to help him get home.
That's fine, you can go with your number if you want.
Okay. Well, there's also F about the council, but all right.
We just want to, Mr. Chair, to give the poor guy a break.
Let's go to G as suggested, for the benefit of all. Jim, tell us about G. I have to read this, request to approve the Snell Creek conservation restriction by 59 Main Road.
So this has been before the board a number of times. Mr. Decker is here, can probably explain a little bit more in detail with me, but this is the property over on Main Road where we had the, one of the potential owners looking for a horse farm. They reserved the back of the property for conservation. This is the CR restriction. The money has been funded by CPC, I think of $150,000. And there was a grant that was awarded for the town to hold a CR restriction. So this is the grant agreement that's in your packet.
Alan, you should speak.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Feel free, you've been here before, welcome you back.
Appreciate the opportunity to be with you. I'm Alan Decker with Buzzard Spade Coalition, and Mr. Hartnett is exactly right. In fact, this story began some time ago, and a year ago yesterday, the Coalition acquired this property, the, the former petty property there on Main Road. As Mr. Hartnett said, and you will vividly remember, the town had a right of first refusal on this property and assigned it to the Coalition. We completed the transaction, and I believe you're also aware that we did, in fact, come to an agreement with Mrs. Cormier, who was to be the purchaser of the entire property. She has subsequently acquired the house on the property and the surrounding two acres. I know you had a series of maps that are actually up on the board.
Is there a better map? I, I have a bunch of files.
Yeah. I'm also happy to hand up paper copies if that's, if that's helpful to the board, just to orient you to this particular property.
You know which one I should look in at?
In particular, the one that's simply labeled Snell Creek Conservation Restriction would be helpful because that gives the, the blow up of the property.
This one right here?
So that's the document itself.
Okay, all right.
And if you want to go through all 35 pages, we can.
I have priority habitat, we got the project open space, we have.
Locusts?
Sorry.
Is there a locust?
No.
And I don't have my glasses on, I apologize.
Snell Creek, Westport.
I can stand, let me stand up and look at what you, and I apologize for this.
These are the files that were in my packet.
Yes, yes, yes. If you will, if you will open this one right here. Perfect.
There we go.
That's the property, and what we're talking about this evening. The blue is, is the, is the house lot that was sold out of, out of the property separately. The blue is, is the, is the house lot that was sold out of, out of the property separately. What we're talking about this evening is the, the conservation restriction included in the red parcel, minus the red. So very narrow, but access and frontage on, on Main Road there at the, at the south part of the property. So we have worked with the Conservation Commission on the proposed conservation restriction. They have agreed to hold it and I will be with them this time next week, getting their approval. For the, for the conservation restriction, we have proposed nothing unusual in our reserved rights on this. We want to make it publicly accessible and enhance that public accessibility by creating a, or develop, if you will, a series of walking trails that enable access to the property crossing Snell Creek at an appropriate spot. We'll work with the Conservation Commission to figure out what the best location for that is. And also to enhance accessibility, create up to two perviously surfaced parking areas, potentially one being off Main Road. The, it doesn't, it doesn't show on, well, it shows very small on this map. The, the frontage is 50 feet. It is enough frontage to create an access point that would run slightly back into the property to create a parking area there. And then there is a, an access at the nor, on the north side of the property off of the ancient way that cuts through, on the, yes, exactly, right there. There could be another parking area there of a maximum each of 3,000 square feet, so 30 by 100, up to that size for both of them, but that would give us the opportunity to enable public access there. Vegetation management and potentially habitat restoration. And candidly, that is the extent of it. It would be managed much like our other publicly accessible properties here in, in Westport. The other map that I would like for you to pull up, if you don't mind, is the one that's labeled Open Space Context, because this gives you, this shows you the property that we're, that we're talking about in red and you can see the assemblage of publicly accessible property. In fact, some property already owned and managed by the Conservation Commission on the, the creek to the, to the west, or the brook, I should say, because that's Angeline Brook. And so we've been working with private landowners there, along with the, the land trust and the Conservation Commission to, to protect property on Angeline Brook. This is our first opportunity to protect a property on Snell Creek. They both are sea run brook trout, native sea run brook trout population creeks, and we're very excited about this opportunity. What I'm asking for tonight is your approval of the conservation restriction. It is going to be purchased by the town from the Coalition, but as Mr. Hartnett mentioned, the funding to make that acquisition has already been lined up. You may remember that town meeting earlier this year voted to approve $150,000 of CPA funding that CPC recommended to town meeting and where that is being paired with, as Mr. Hartnett also mentioned, a small $30,000 grant that the town was awarded directly. So the, the purchase price for the conservation restriction will be $180,000. And I'm working with Mr. Hartnett and, and council representing the town to effectuate all of that so that we will be ready for, for closing pending approval. I'm happy to answer any questions that members have.
Questions?
No, looks great, looks good to me.
Regarding, Alan, regarding the access.
Yes.
Narrow, the frontage.
It is narrow.
And does the occupant of the house need to give permission or is already a lien built in to do this?
The owner of the house is not necessary for permission. The, the plan that created the house lot was a flec, was done under the flexible frontage law, bylaw that the town has. So we worked with planning board and got the approval of, of the plan. And as I said, her, she owns that, that blue area, which is just at two acres, slightly under, but I think it's 1.89. But there is sufficient frontage for us to create a driveway.
Okay.
An access point. And we would do so as safely as possible, obviously, that's, it is on a slight curve as you can see, so.
Yeah, I, the map I'm looking at is a slightly different one and didn't.
It, it is, yes. The, the other open space maps are slightly older. That is the accurate, the, the blow up though is the accurate, accurate map that shows the blue, the blue area.
Yeah, I get it.
Yeah, I appreciate the question.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Further discussion, comments?
We need a vote on this, correct? I'll move it.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion from the selectmen? Any comments from public members here tonight? If none, I assume it's time to vote. All in favor, you can keep saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None? The motion carries unanimously. Five in favor, none opposed.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, if you don't mind, I have a signature page to hand up to you, I'd be happy to, I can notarize it as well, if you don't mind. It's the same one, I did do, Ms. Boxler, if you don't mind, I did it on bond paper.
Oh, so I don't, we don't need to sign this one?
And what I can do, I'd be happy to.
Do you want that one signed too?
No, I, let me just copy that one. What I, yeah, what I can do is notarize it and I will send it to you if you don't mind. Or I can do it right now for you, I just don't have my seal with me. It's fine, it's fine. Okay, I'd be happy to do that. Thank you very much.
My pleasure.
Yeah, this is, we're very happy about the result here. This is, this has worked out well.
We believe it, and I can notarize it and pick it up tomorrow.
Absolutely. You want to do that, that'd be just fine. That's yours.
We do have to check for you as well.
Great, okay, well then even more motivated. All right, thank you very much.
Good to see you.
All right, good to see you too. Thank you very much. I'll, I'll be in touch.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Back up to D.
All right, now you're getting me all balled up here, so.
Back up to D, back to D.
Back to D, D is a dog.
D, okay. Request from Betty Slade and Robin Winters to replace the Mariners Lost at Sea Monument at Westport Point. Listen, Robin, and now Betty, good to see you tonight.
Hi.
I think I know what you're talking about, come public.
Down the school.
Come on, down the school.
So I'm Betty Slade and this is Robin Winters, who works in the library, who's a researcher, par excellence. The, you all know about the monument that was erected about 1995 by the Westport Fishermen's Association, based on the research of the documents at the time by Cukie Macumber. And he came up with about 29?
31 names.
31 names.
Based on the vital records, because that's what we had to work with back then.
So now we have found, we now have 61 names.
Sixty.
So it's too small a stone and we asked for some kind of funding from a private nonprofit foundation and we were awarded $10,000 and they want to remain anonymous. And so we've been over to Albinay's and Albinay's is going to make it very similar, it's much larger, but very similar to what it is now with the, I don't see if you've seen the etching at the top and so forth. The names will now be in chronological order and it will include also Native Americans and black sailors from Westport, from the cuffies and wainers in particular, and their in-laws.
Phelps.
And then you want to talk about the ship?
The ship?
Yeah.
Oh, yes, Theophilus Chase.
Yes.
So it always bothered me when I would be down at the point that the only person from Theophilus Chase on the monument, and at the Point Cemetery too, this one, was Pardon Macumber, who of course was the captain, 1849. And I'm like, well gee, had to have had a crew and most likely a lot of those men would have been from Westport, because Theophilus Chase was built here, wasn't it built at the head? So when I was working with Jim Delgado for the Brig Industry, wonderful thing, I had access to when archives finally opened, because the crew list for, let me back up, the crew list for Theophilus Chase was not on the website, so we had no idea who was on the boat with Captain Pardon Macumber. So when archives finally opened up after the, I think, two-year closure because of COVID, and I was able to speak with someone, I was able to get not only the crew list for Brig Industry for 1835, but I also requested and asked if they had a crew list for Theophilus Chase for 1849. And he said, hold on, and he came back and he said, yes, and I was like, yes. So he sent it, I can still get the goosebumps. And of course, there were 11 men from Westport on the crew, in addition to Pardon Macumber, so that made a total of 12. So you'll see 12 names on the monument that all say 1849, it's all because they were on Theophilus Chase, which was never heard from again. So what was I going to say? So, yeah, then we had to research and make sure they didn't get off the boat at the 11th hour. So Richard Gibbard has been hugely helpful with this project and Betty has been wonderful, she was able to get the funding for me. I just can't even believe it's coming to fruition, it's really exciting. Hopefully we won't, I call it the perpetual monument, because as soon as we're ready to call it and like, okay, we're done.
No, we're done.
We find out about another one.
We're done, we're done.
Like Alice's ancestors.
Leave room on the back.
We're done.
And there are two more, because Alice has got to find them in her six bins of soap.
Anyway, so we, we're asking for permission to move, remove the present stone and the Buzzard Bay Coalition now runs the life saving station. They said they take that stone and we will replace it with the new stone and we will have a nice memorial service. We've talked with Chris Liner, he's all in favor, so we're asking your permission to substitute one stone for another.
It's not on the only.
It's not on the only.
Okay. I want to make sure Jeff Bull is.
It's the harbor master side of it.
You know Jeff Bull, he'll, he'll get it if we don't run by him. All right, I'll move it.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Any further comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you guys, we're done.
I love the story.
Oh, with you, you got more time.
Oh boy.
I could talk all night about it. That's why I stopped there. I just ramble a lot of the.
Well, Valerie's looking for some stories from cable, so she might interview you. They've got some space to fill.
I think we're going to do a booklet.
Oh, great.
With the stories of all the different guys.
Awesome.
Jim, five in favor, none opposed.
Yes, got it.
Well, you can, you can use a video. Well, thank you. Now E, is that okay to go to E now?
Yeah.
Yeah? Request from the school department to approve an additional $25,794 of American Rescue Plan Act funds for two passenger vans. Jim, we'll explain the meeting of the day and what this is about.
And so previously, the school had requested $180,000 for two passenger vans for their, for a number of reasons. I think some special education transfers, for athletics, for transfers during the day as well. When it did go off the bid, off the state bid list with the accessories that they needed on the van, the price came in at 205,000, so they requested an additional $25,794, which would be local offer funds.
So we pointed out in our meeting, not looking for another van, this is the two vans that were originally approved. That's inflation for us.
Big vans.
So I just want to say, so I was on the ARPA committee where we, we talked about this and the, like, it does seem like the school department's getting a lot of vehicles here, but they're really saving money with every vehicle. Like, they, they, the transportation costs are crazy and, and even they can, you know, you can't transport everyone on our own because some have really intense medical needs and you have to have qualifications that are exceed, you know, it's not just somebody driving a van, it's, you need special training. But this really helps them save a lot of money and I think it's a really good, we approved the original, the original 180 came out of the Bristol County ARPA money, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so the original 180 went to Bristol County. They kind of, the process for getting the Bristol County money approved is kind of arduous, so we kind of looked at, it made more sense to come from the town for this incremental cost. So I completely support this.
All right, have it.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion, any further discussion on this? All in favor, you can keep saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None? Again, Jim, five in favor, none opposed.
Save us some for infrastructure, we might have to get into that.
There's still quite a bit there, you have projects.
All right. We may need some.
The 5F is a request from the council on aging to accept the following donations totaling $893.70. It's not a long list, so I'll take a chance and read it, if we get it right. $20 Nancy Kelly, this is for technical help, $100 from Jerry Fortia, that's breakfast, $25 from Janice Goulet, equipment loan, $50 from Veronica Barrero in memory of Arthur Anctil, $300 from Carol Crispin, also in memory of Arthur Anctil, and $50 from Valerie Gordon, also in memory of Arthur Anctil. $103.70 from friends, some of the friends of the Westport Council on Aging, that's for yoga boosters, $45 from David Severs, technical help, tech help, $25 from Dawn Campbell, tech help, $40 from Nadine Kagle, tech help, $10 anonymous, best use, and $100 from Michael McCarthy, Mike McCarthy, tech to help, and $25 from Will and Nancy Side for outreach. Total of $893.70.
Motion accept.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries also, Jim, five in favor, none opposed. And we did G, so H, request from the planning board to initiate amendments to the town zoning bylaws for consideration at the 2020 annual town meeting relating to short-term rentals in bed and breakfast establishments. Jim, you can maybe fill in.
Play out from the house.
Michael Barris here.
Michael?
Here if you have any questions.
Well, I do.
No, I'm not.
It's really just simple. So in terms of, what do I, this is Michael for the, Michael Barris from the planning board.
Town planner.
Town planner, yeah.
Town planner. So the amendments haven't been prepared yet, I take it?
Yeah, so the amendments, well, this, this draft bylaw still has to go to the planning board for a public hearing and then that would be the, more or less the final draft. Before we go to a public hearing, there's also going to be a working session for the planning board to discuss these, these, the short-term rental committees by law, give them an opportunity to discuss it a little bit further.
Now, there was a committee that worked on this, is that correct?
Yeah.
But this request is from the planning board, so they've received the committee's work?
Yes, they have. So the, the committee was composed of two members of the planning board, two members of the zoning board appeals, and one member from the Board of Health. They, the planning board asked the select board to create this committee to study, or to, to come up with a zoning bylaw for short-term rentals. And the short-term rental committee forwarded that to the planning board for their consideration, but in order to initiate the whole process, we have to, the planning board has to forward it to the select board, who then sends it back.
Okay, thank you. Do you have a hand up?
No.
No? Any questions? Barry?
No, this is just kind of bureaucratic, bureaucratic thing, we have to send it to them so that they can talk about it.
Yep.
So we need, we'll move it back to the planning board, correct?
Yep, motion to refer the proposed bylaws to the planning board, so.
Second.
Well, motion made and seconded. Discussion on the motion. Well, we're referring back, though, we haven't, we haven't seen that.
The draft bylaws.
It's in here?
Yeah.
Forgive me.
It shouldn't be part of the package, it should just conclude. I do have a hard copy here.
But we're not endorsing the contents of anything, we're just.
There's a procedural process where it has the, the planning board, zoning board, I think 10 citizens can file a zoning change and they file that with the board of selectmen. Board of selectmen refer it to the planning board and that starts the public hearing process.
Okay. Just want a clarification on that. All right. So the motion is made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, you can keep saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None? Five in favor, none opposed. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you. Just so you all know that the work session is on December 19th and the public hearing is on January 9th.
So noted, thank you.
Thanks.
Have a good evening.
You too.
That would conclude then the items under that category number five, which was action items, which were action items. Six, discussion. A, town broadband update. Maybe Josh, you, Jim, I know, maybe you have some comments, it's on us, so I guess, start with you and then go from there.
I don't have much to start with, I think there's a presentation.
Okay. To go through and.
So I thought, I thought what we would do is, and up to you, but what I thought you'd do is we'd give you a brief recap of where we are with the fiber broadband, the Internet[1631.62] with the fiber broadband, the Internet Advisory Committee is, so that we can just kind of remind everybody where we are and give an update, and then we can have discussion. It's not really 20 slides. It's quick.
It's okay.
But I thought that would help facilitate the conversation if we could just get the background quickly done through. And we do have Keith Novo here, who's on the committee and also the IT director for town.
Okay, is that with the pleasure of the committee? Okay, then.
So the, the fiber broadband initiative, kind of the history. In 2019, Keith started preparing a solution for the municipal fiber needs. So he was looking at, how do we connect the towns to high-speed internet through fiber? In 2021, there was a Westport master plan update that identified expanding internet services as a key priority for Westport. The reason that there, it kind of became an initiative is because there's a sentiment now that the internet is now a utility. It's necessary for conducting business in 2023. Rural areas are generally neglected by the private sector. Private sector likes to invest in high-density areas. So you see a lot of cities get FiOS. It's because they're highly dense. They can get a lot of subscribers in a very short amount of space. Rural areas are really difficult because they have to traverse a lot, they have to load a lot more fiber. They have to spend a lot more money to, so rural areas get neglected. So this is why kind of the public sector is stepping in to make sure that rural areas are getting, whoops, rural areas are getting access to this utility in the way that they want. And there's a lot of government grants going on. There's incentives, there's, we have a lot of, there's a lot of money coming through from the infrastructure, the federal infrastructure plan, that kind of thing. There's 750 municipal broadband networks in the United States, according to the American Association of Public Broadband. So this is why we started looking at, we had the backbone from the town, and we started looking at, how can the town help the residents get more access to fiber? So we have kind of a timeline, I'm just going to try to hit some of the highlights. So we talked about 19, started the plan. In 21, we started, we signed, the select board signed the agreement for the fiber backbone to all the towns. So that's the municipal loop. It goes all the way from Cumbes at the top, all the way to the Harbor Master. And then it kind of loops in with the schools now. So it's this, we're all the way up north-south through the town for that initial municipal backbone. In 20, in the summer of 21, there was a survey conducted of residents. You see some of the answers and some of the results in the appendix to this. In October of 21, the master plan called for updates, called for expanding high-speed internet through the town. In January of 22, we founded this board, established the Internet Advisory Committee. And we had two town meeting votes in May of 22 and May of 23 to establish a municipal light plant. We did in May of 22 receive a community compact grant, so that we have two north loops. There's a map, but it's kind of hard to read. So we have the town loop now, and then we have this grant to get the two north loops. That was funded because it's an economic, it's not, it's economically disadvantaged area that those grants were for. By summer of 22, we had all the town sites were connected. In October of 22, we signed the contracts to get that northwest and northeast loops. Those loops were just recently completed in October of 23. In January of 23, or so, I'm sorry, in November of 22, we had that broadband master plan. So Dick, I think that was in the packet. So we had the broadband, master plan was completed with Entry Point and the Internet Advisory Committee kind of talking about the plan going forward. In January of 23, we joined the Mass Broadband Coalition. There's 25 other towns that are in this coalition to kind of share information. They're really looking at, how do we, like, is there a possibility to have cooperatives, to share? We're more attractive to private companies if we could get some of our neighbors involved instead of just our subscriber base. They're looking at the kinds of funding that are available, identifying grants. So this is a really valuable coalition with 25 towns kind of sharing information. Keith and David Cole are really quite actively involved in that. So in February of 23, we got the school, the old high school looped in. So the town administration's on there. And then, like you said, the, we just completed the northwest fiber loops. It's important to note, so we have this map, it's hard to read. It's important to note that these north fiber loops are there, but they're not actually serving any customers. Because this is the, this is like the infrastructure loop. You still have to get it to the building, and that part is not done yet. And we don't have any plans for that right now.
Again, I was going to ask you, what's the timeline? What's the plans?
So, so I said the Internet Advisory Committee was formed in January of 2022. There was a question that went on about the infrastructure committee. The, the internet committee predates the infrastructure committee. So the internet was found first. I think later in 22 is when the Route 6 infrastructure, or the infrastructure committee was formed. In 22, we partnered with Entry Point to develop that master plan. We sponsored the two-town meeting articles to create the municipal light plant. Those were approved in two consecutive town meetings. We've provided a lot of information available to the community. So we have on the town website, we have westportfiber.com, we have that master plan. There was a presentation to the select board that the committee put together. The key principles for the Internet Advisory Committee is, nobody's going to be forced to participate. This is optional, as a subscriber, we want to be demand-led. So only people who want to participate will be able to participate. We do not want the town taxpayers to have to pay anything. We want this to be funded by subscribers. And we, the ongoing operation of the network should be self-sustaining, and there should not be any subsidy from the town required. So from the very beginning, we said, we don't want this to be part of the town budget. We don't want it to be operated by the town budget. We want it to be a separate entity that operates it and separate funding and payments. The objectives of the committee were to increase the speed and reliability of internet service to reduce the cost for residents and business. We want to increase the competition and choice. So once we have this municipal fiber down, the internet providers now, multiple people can subscribe. So you can, I could subscribe to one, and Dick could subscribe to somebody else. It's open, and we believe that'll create more competition and reduce costs for consumers. We wanted to make sure that we built a state-of-the-art network that would foster economic development, particularly working from home. And we want to make sure that we're leveraging that network to improve services like public safety, healthcare, education, that sort of thing. So just a reminder, so the profile of what we've spent so far. So, so far, $494,199 of town funds were used. That was for the town backbone. So that was approved at town meeting, and then there was a little bit of school funds to loop that in. We also have had several significant grants with CARES Fund. We had a community compact, I think CCC's community compact. And then some ARPA funds. So you can see that we've had 500, about $560,000 of federal and state money so far. The cost savings that we've had, so the prior network cost about 80 grand to maintain. The new network costs about 14. So we're saving $66,000 in the town school network for support for that broadband. Just a reminder, I don't, I think I meant to move this onto the appendix. But the, we talk a lot about cost-saving to the consumer. It depends a lot on how many people sign up. So, you know, if only 40% of the eligible town take it up, it'll be about $85 a month for a subscriber. A 60% would be $70. What's important here is that the cost breakdown, you have infrastructure. So this is the build-out. The build-out is the expensive thing. It's roughly $20 million to build out the whole infrastructure. Maintenance and operations, so this is how we're, the maintenance and operations is how you continue going on with, with the service. So, you know, the support tickets, if something, if something breaks and somebody has to come fix it, the kind of the billing, the main, just the kind of operating of it is part of that bill, not part of the town tax base. Then there's the ISP service. And then also, you recall, we had a lot of discussion about making sure that we were funding public access programs. So the public access program for cable is $4 a month. So we're proposing the same public access money coming from this service. So we don't want to, the cable funding provides a lot of good government videos and that kind of thing. So we want to make sure that that was intact. But this is still just proposed. Right now, we didn't want to come to the committee right now because we didn't have a specific ask. So we were asked to come. So I thought we'd just talk about the, the big questions that we have that we're still doing a lot of research on. So the first one is, what really is the best form of public authority to oversee the network? There's a lot of conversation going on in that broadband coalition about whether the overseeing, the management, the run-maintain of the network, whether that should be municipal light plant, should it be public-private partnership, should it be part of a cooperative, should it be part of an enterprise fund? Really early on, we thought municipal light plant was the way to go. Now, we're starting to get more input that that's not as certain as it once was. So we're starting to look at other kind of mechanisms. We're not many, we're making a recommendation now. There's still so much information out there that we're trying to sort through and gather so that we would be prepared to make a recommendation for that. But it is, it isn't certain what the right public authority is. You'll, the town meeting votes authorize the creation of a municipal light plant, but we're not asking for the creation of a municipal light plant yet. We want to make sure we're sorting out the pros and cons of the various options. The other big question, which frankly is the biggest one for me, is how do we fund this infrastructure build-out? When, when we first came to, when we first came before you, we said we wanted to set this municipal light plant because we wanted to enter into bonding that was separate from the town obligations. And we believe that you could bond out with this entity or with a private partner and separate out the debt for the entity versus regular town debt. We're getting some initial input from KP Law that that's not really possible, that if we wanted to bond out the infrastructure, that we might have to do a regular debt exclusion, like a regular tax debt exclusion, like everything else. But there's a lot of uncertainty about the accuracy of that. So we're still trying to do some research to figure that out. And we're working with KP Law to make sure we're understanding that correctly. So that is a big open item. It's $20 million-ish funding. And if we can't bond it out the way we wanted to do it, it may or may not make sense anymore to keep going. That also has led us, though, to looking at other grants and other federal programs. There's a big one that I, you know, this might be a long shot, but there's a big one where we're, there's some talk about putting in for the $20 million for this, I think it's a federal program. But it would require a 10% matching fund. So if we, if we were to be awarded this $20 million grant, that would be huge, just to make sure taxpayers don't have to pay it. But we would probably still need to have a debt exclusion or something for the $2 million matching fund. This is a, it's a large matching that you'd have to be required. So we're not certain on the funding for the, for the build-out. We're looking at other grant opportunities. And then, like I said, we're looking at the type of oversight that might be more appropriate. So the next steps for our committee, the first, the next thing that we think is needed is a detailed engineering, construction-ready plan. The, the plans that we have now had the municipal line, and it had the initial loops that are required to meet the needs of the town. But it isn't that last mile to the home. So it's only, it's that middle, that, we have the middle engineering design. We do not have the to-the-home engineering design. Anybody that came in is going to need that engineering plan, whether we do it, whether, you know, FiOS does it, whether we have a private partnership. We, we need to know that to the, to the home design so that we can then start building out the loops. So right now, we're looking at sources of funding. We think that's around $500,000, but I think we haven't gone out for an RFP yet for that. So we're looking at whether there are grants that can pay for that plan or not. So, but we think that plan is necessary to kind of look at phases of the project because we can get benefits to the town without all the phases. So this is one of the things, this is probably the next thing we'll come back to this board with is once we have a recommendation for there. There's also, we're trying to consider whether we want to build out those northern loops. So I said, we got that middle layer of those northern loops, but that still doesn't get it to the building. But we think that there might be more grants similar to the ones that got that loop in. There might be more grants available to get it to the home. Because we're still talking about economically disadvantaged area. So we might be able to, to build out that part of the loop. That would require that we have some decisions on the oversight of how it's going to run. Because that would be now providing to the home. So now you have subscribers, and you have the, you know, the operations and maintenance of the system. So we're not ready to do that yet, but that's definitely something that we're talking about right now. Like I said, with those questions, we're, we're in the process of evaluating the public authority options so that we can make a recommendation. We're investigating some of the oversight models and making recommendations there. David Cole and Keith Novo are doing a heroic effort on applying for grants and that sort of thing, and, and looking for grants. And then we're going to continue working with the Mass Broadband Coalition. So there's another eight or so slides in your deck of some just background information. If you want that, obviously, the digital access master plan is out there. But this is basically where we are. That's, that's what I.
Very good, thank you. Questions, comments?
So this municipal loop, we've spent close to $1 million on right now?
We've spent.
You gave us a little earlier, yeah.
On the municipal loop, we've spent, yes, close to $1 million. For the municipal loop, yep. And the, yeah, that's right.
So what, what did we have initially before we did this?
We had low-speed, regular cable internet.
So there was no fiber to the municipal buildings?
There was no fiber. There was, it was just low-speed, it was co-op, co-op, what was it? Sorry, you have to come to the. It wasn't high-speed internet before that.
I mean, the vendor had what they call hybrid. So it was a mixture of, of coaxing fiber.
So it did have fiber to the municipal buildings. Now, what, so what did that cost us a year?
It cost us $80,500 per year.
Now, now this fiber that loop that we have to the municipal buildings now, who's maintaining that?
We have a vendor that, I have a maintenance contract with a vendor who will maintain that fiber if it gets broken.
So there's, that, that maintenance contest, if nothing happens, we don't pay anything for that?
Well, you, you have to have them on a, I guess, retainer of the speed.
The current maintenance cost is $14,500.
All right, now, what happens if we have a hurricane and all these poles get taken out?
They would have to be repaired.
And what would that cost to be?
We, there's no way to know that.
No, I'm just, because, because of that.
I appreciate what you're making a statement if we have the cost.
First off, this is outdated technology. It should have been, any fiber should have been buried. I mean, your subdivision, like you literally.
I may, I may just address that. The reason that the fiber isn't buried, the reason that it's strung on these poles is because we have access to those poles under municipal, the municipal easement, right? So if we were to, you're right, underground would be better. My neighborhood has it underground. But we, that would require digging up the entirety of Main Road to lay this fiber. We had, we had space and an easement on these lines, so that's why we ran them that way.
And, and that's for the municipal buildings? Now, what happens when we try selling this to a customer? What's our cost?
The, the, the ideal, so we would have to enter a maintenance contract. So the cost is unknown. We think that the subscriber cost is around $21 a month. But we'd have to, we'd have to investigate that more. But you're right, that they, the plan would be to use the municipal space. This is why, this is why, this is why Spectrum hasn't done it, or Verizon hasn't done it. Because they would have to dig up the roads or purchase space on these lines. We own that, so if it's a municipal input, we can do that. So there is maintenance costs associated with that that we've planned for in the operational budget.
Oh, I mean, the reason that they haven't done it is because they determined that it's not economically feasible.
Exactly, it's very expensive. It's $20 million to install it, yes.
But it's going to be economically feasible for us?
Yes, and the reason that it would be economically feasible in a municipal setting that it would not be in a private setting is our ability to have longer bonding. So you can bond municipal, municipal infrastructure can be bonded for longer than a private company can bond it for. So they would have a three- to five-year window that they'd have to pay back. If we do it with a municipal bonding, you have a more like a 20-year payback. So that makes it more affordable monthly for the infrastructure build-out.
So these, these contracts for this loop, so like that, that loop on the, on the north side of Route 6, when are we ever going to use that?
We'll use it once we have subscribers hooked up. There is nobody, there is no current plan for that. That's one of the things that we're addressing, is to build out the current plan, to build out the plan for that.
So we went forward and built that, and it may never be used?
We used grant money that was available at the time with a limited funding base to, to put that in. But you're right, it doesn't have value until you actually connect it.
And I thought at town meeting, they were saying they weren't going to use any tax dollars.
We didn't use any tax dollars for those loops. Those were funded through grants.
Okay, but, so looking at the contracts, the way the contracts were negotiated, the town's paying for the police details, that's not tax dollars?
I believe it was part of the contract cost.
Not the way the contract's written. And the other contract?
It was, it was paid for through, through the grant.
We used the, so we used the combination of grant, the town funds of $486,000 plus the $8,000. So the, the $494,000 of town funds funded those contracts. Now, if you're saying we might have spent 10 grand or something on police details, I don't know. I don't like that right from the. But the town approved, the 500,000 was for the municipal loop, which is absolutely in service right now.
Yeah, that's half of what we spent. I'm just looking at where I seen it in the contract, that, that the town is responsible for the police details, and they will be coordinated by the contractor, but we're going to pay for it.
All right, so we'll have to give you that information, the total amounts spent on the detail. Unless you have that key right at your hand.
No, I don't.
We don't have it at hand.
I'm just like, this contract went up, so this.
This contract was signed by the select board.
Okay, did it go up to bid?
Yes.
Did, we got the bid documents or anything on that?
It was off the state bid list.
Okay. So, so you can, you believe that you can give a 400 and something dollar contract without getting a bid, just by taking a vendor?
We followed the proper procurement for the town, and the select board approved it.
I mean, the contract doesn't, I mean, this looks like this contract is, was written by the contractor, not the town.
It went through the municipal procurement process and was approved by this board.
I mean, okay.
I mean, we can look at the next contract, maybe the next contract.
Well, I mean, what I, what I would recommend is maybe that, maybe that we recommend that the Massachusetts Office of the Inspector General look at the contracts. Because I just, you know, I've never seen, I've done a little bit, a little bit of this type of work. And I've just, you know, I've never seen a contract where they were paid the day that the materials got delivered, and 95% the minute they started working, and then they get the 5% when they left.
It's important to know that they fulfilled the terms of the contract.
Well, how do we even know that? They were already gone before they, and got paid before they did work.
Well, we're using it. Well, we're using it. We know that they're there.
Well, we're not using the loop on the other side of, what's that?
If you want, I mean, it's, if, if you need more information on the procurement process, I'm sure Jim can provide that.
Now, we're looking at how we're gonna fund from the, from the building, from the, from the loop to the building, to the customers that we're gonna maybe someday get. You know, we're looking for, we're looking for money to do that.
Yes, we are.
Okay, and I, and I understand that we could use, we could use these monies for infrastructure and IT, but what my concern is, you, you, you have a municipal water loop to a school that we didn't even have designed and we've got a loop on the other side of Route 6 that actually goes down through, comes up to Dartmouth Line and jumps over onto Dartmouth Poles on the other side and comes back in like three, four locations. I mean, do we have permission to be on poles to have, that Dartmouth has easements with the utility company? I mean, I, it's just not looking, you know, when I, I was at town meeting and they said, "We're not gonna use any taxpayer money for this."
Correct.
And I don't see that we're gonna use any taxpayer money for it.
We use taxpayer money, we absolutely use taxpayer money approved by town meeting for the municipal loop. We did use that, yes, we did.
And, and, and town meeting, they said they weren't going for it?
No, town, that, the project that funded the town loop was a previous town meeting before the discussions of the municipal plan.
And I, and I think I was at that town meeting too when we were discussing the possibility of doing this. I, I was just...
It's definitely one of the principles. I mean, you'll recall what I just said, one of our objectives was that, or one of our key principles is that it should not be funded by taxpayers. We want it to be self-sustaining.
Right, and that's so far hasn't happened. And we, we have, we've spent money that we could use in other places to put a piece of fiber on, on the other side of Route 6.
We could not have used that money for other places because it was specifically targeted at a grant for low-income areas.
What about, so, I, I also seen here, like, one of the grants was for the cameras on the high school, and I believe you're working on that?
Uh, it was cameras for the town hall in the annex.
So, there's no, no cameras in the high school. It wasn't a grant that...
Not associated, not, this money was not associated with any.
There was a grant for that, yeah.
And, and, and who initiated, like, so who did that work?
That, I don't, with...
The, the cam, that was part of the community compact grant. That was a state grant.
And you, you did that work on the high school?
Not in the high school, on the, for the town hall in the annex.
Okay, so, so that was, but the school got, got those, that grant money. What did you, what was that money used for?
I don't know what the school, what money there's...
There's some stuff in the package, Jim, that you sent me. And there was a, there was a, there was a grant that, that the superintendent got for cameras.
There might have been a, there might have been a school.
So, then I believe, I believe that was one of the grants that they were talking about. I mean, it was, I guess it was to save us, to save us overall cost on the school, they got a grant and, you know, helped us come in on the budget, I'm sure, but it just looked like to me at the package that, that was used as part of the IT group.
The packet I sent, what, I don't think included anything on school cameras.
I just seen some stuff in there, so I'll never just...
We may have neglected to include, if the school had a grant, we might not have included that in the gr, total grants.
The, the one thing with the school that I did mention was the original loop for the school was gonna be paid for through the CARES Act.
Right.
And then, it was actually paid for on the town side through the CARES Act.
Which, I, I think this municipal loop didn't give us any benefit whatsoever. I mean, I think so.
It connected us from Cumberland Farms down to the Harbor Masters office.
I understand, but we, we had a vendor that was supplying us with that. So, and I did see, you know, we just spent, we just spent the, I think it was $8,600 or $8,700 to tie the old high school in where we have the administrative offices in. And, you know, up until they tied that in this year, I don't, you know, were there any problems coming from them and what we had for service? I mean, that, that's the hub that ties in and bleeds the police and the fire too. They're all in, they were all on that level loop before.
So, I'm hearing you say that you disagree with the project as it was done, so we're not, that's already done. So, those are sunk costs, they're already done, so it sounds like you're urging us to use caution going forward. You can, we just, we can't undo something that went in the past, right? So, I'm trying to understand what information you need or what we should be researching for you to get you what you, to get you what you're looking for.
From what I'm, what I'm hearing, and, and again, so, so you know, since the 80s, the federal government's been pushing for underground. So, when we started doing subdivisions in the early 80s and including, I did the one across the street from Meadowbrook. I know the contractor did Meadowbrook. Okay, we used to put a, we used to put a spare duck in that was provided by Verizon. They would give the contractor the bu, the duck for fiber since, I've been, I was doing that since 1988.
If Verizon wants to do that, they're welcome.
Since, since 1988, and it would, nobody's ever used that duck for fiber because they determined that it wasn't economically feasible. So, I'm just, I'm just thinking, why does the town wanna get into this business?
Because the private sector isn't, so, they, and, and you can disagree that we should, the, the principle that we're operating under is that broadband is now a utility. It is necessary for people to have access to reliable high-speed internet access. And because the private sector isn't funding it, that the government or municipal, state and federal governments are trying to subsidize that so that you can get that into the hands of, of the, the people who need it. Now, you can disagree that we should be involved at all and, you know, maybe the project won't progress after here anyway, but that's what we're, that's why the government is involved because we believe we can do it at a lower monthly cost to the subscribers and we believe we will do it because if you look at Spectrum or the, the other Verizon, they're not coming down here. They're welcome anytime. They're a private industry, they can come down, but, and they're not choosing not to.
And they won't. I mean, because the technology's, that technology's old. I mean, you know, one of the reasons that, you know, the cellphone power, that's not for cellphones that just got put down off 88. That's for, you know, you got Starlink, you got, there's a lot, there's a lot more different technologies today.
So, this is the comparison for the difference between fiber and star net. So, if you look at, if you look at Starlink, they're at 150 megabytes and fiber's at 25, whatever that is, terabytes. So, it, you're, you're right that satellite might make improvement and be better and maybe 150 is all you really need and you don't really need fiber, so there is an argument to be made there, but it is not equivalent.
Well, I, I mean, our ambulances, that's how, that's how they're linked in. They have internet. I mean, talk to the fire department if they have any problems with connections. I mean, I, I have IT equipment that's run on automation. You know, there's lots, we're digging next to gas lines. I mean, it's pretty, it's pretty sophisticated today. It's just, I believe this is an outdated...
I, personally, I think that our, the technology is gonna continue to advance and we're building for the future. The, the demands, the data demands are just gonna grow exponentially over the coming years and I don't know that, you know, wireless is gonna be able to keep up with that. Fiber is always gonna be able to keep up with that because the, because the, the components that connect it are always gonna be advancing faster than, than the wireless, so you're gonna be able to continue to take care of and, and service the, the needs and the demands going into the future.
So, I mean, then going, then going forward, I mean, this, the fiber is buried in Route 6. That line that you're tapping into, that's where it's coming from.
It is aerial, it's not buried.
So, you're not hooked into the line that, that's in Route 6 that's...
I am connected to an internet connection there and it is aerial.
Your connection's aerial, but the line coming down Route 6 is, is buried.
It's aerial as well.
Okay, well, there is, there is a fiber that's already buried in Route 6.
The one that I know of is aerial.
So, you know, my, my only, my, my, my last thought on this would be that, you know, if we were, if we were moving forward with this and we were gonna spend a million dollars of it, then get a piece of the leg buried. I mean, because this goes, this does nothing for coastal resilience hurricanes. We haven't had one since Hurricane Bob, but I don't know. Were you hit during Hurricane Bob?
No, but I, I mean, buried is better. I'm not gonna argue with that. I cannot, when I moved to New England, I could not believe all of the infrastructure on lines and places where it snows and winds.
It was like a white water table that floods out the troughs.
That was completely foreign to me.
That's not even a problem, yes.
Oh, it was a major problem, trust me.
But, but the, the only problem with burying it is that it costs more money, right? If you're trying to get the cost down, it, that's the problem with burying it.
Well, you won't lose it. I mean, do we have some kind of insurance policy on this? I, I mean, this could be, like, you could wipe us all out in one storm.
We would have to look at how we construct a maintenance contract going forward to reduce our risk of that because we don't want the town, this is why, this is why we've been talking a lot about the, the, the entities that could run and fund this, right? Because I personally don't want the taxpayers to be able to have to, like, you know, if we had, I mean, I can't even think of an equivalent. If we, if we had a tornado that tore down Town Hall, it would be a disaster, right? So, we'd have, we have insurance for that, so we would cover it, but it would be, so you're, you're right, there is risk there that we try to mitigate.
Probably get FEMA, right? Maybe, maybe they'd pay for it, but maybe at that point we could get...
We'd have to look at how to reduce the risk overall. I'm most concerned about the fact that if we can't figure out how to keep this separate, because, because the, the option that the legal is saying is use an enterprise fund and, because then you can, you know, separate out the money and like, and, and use an enterprise fund that way. And that's the way KP Law is saying that, that they prefer to do it, but there's more risk to the town that way, so we wanna de-risk this. We're also looking at public-private partnerships because if we can get a partner to, to lay out a lot of this initial cost, we would pay more because we'd have to pay them a premium to do that, but that would de-risk it for the town. And, and maybe the town wouldn't take it over until it's half-built or whatever, so we're only building, we're only, we're only, we're looking at options like that because we wanna de-risk the town from the, from the spend. So, that's really, the efforts that we're going on now are how do we best do that? It would be better if a private entity would come in and just do it. That would be best, but if they won't, then how do we, how do we figure out how to fund that and whether we should continue?
Well, I mean, we already know how our enterprise fund's working for our water systems, you know, we're doing great with that. So, I, I just, I just think it's something that's never gonna happen.
It's possible that we won't recommend proceeding. It's possible.
Those fellows, wireless field, no, right?
Well, we are gonna do, hopefully, we're gonna do some Route 6 build-out and this would be a very smart investment, so, all right.
All right, so, we're not making a decision here. This is an update.
No, we're not asking for any action.
Good discussion. I've learned a lot from listening.
Thank you for coming out. I, you know, I, again, I mean, I'm on various boards. I had no idea what you guys were doing on the other side of that line and, and to me, I don't even know if we have a right to come down Highland Avenue, but we're there now and, you know, I, I mean, I would, I would like probably the next step to look at what the cost would be with what Verizon and Eversource who own the poles that we're on, that they gave us permission for the municipal loop. When we go and become their competitors, what are they gonna charge us?
We don't need their permission for the municipal loop. We have an easement.
No, that's right. I understand that, but I'm talking about where the, you know, we also had a municipal loop, so we spent all this money for, because we're, we're thinking we're gonna be in the internet business and we're gonna get customers.
We're thinking we're delivering a necessary utility to the citizens of Westport.
Well, you ran, did the loop go down Davis Road?
The loop right now is only down Main Road.
No?
Well, I'm sorry, I don't understand where it is.
The loop goes down Old Beffet Road and down Highland Ave.
The two north loops.
Yes.
Right, didn't go down Davis Road. There's more customers on Davis Road than Highland Ave, but you're gonna capture customers from Dartmouth on, on...
That's why we need the whole detailed plan so that we can phase it, right? So, we know the right, we phased it, the only, the reason those first phases were there is because that's where we had money that we could access for those particular areas. But if we had the detailed build-out plan, we could be more thoughtful about year one, we do this loop and get the subscribers in because the sooner you get the subscribers, now you're, now you're paying yourself back, right? So, you want subscribers quickly, but we don't have a good plan yet that gets us to how do you get the most subscribers the quickest?
David, is that his comment for us?
It may have been mentioned already, but in the survey that we did two years ago, the respondents, 500 respondents, very strongly favored moving ahead on this. And in the recent town meeting vote, the vote was 180 in favor and 12 against. So, that suggests to me that there's a strong interest in the township, in the businesses and the residents in moving ahead with this. They see the advantages and they wanna support it. Thank you.
David, to the chair. David, could I, could I respond to that?
Go ahead.
Also, in that meeting, you said there would be no taxpayer dollars used for this.
That's right. Where...
Well, I, I kinda disagree with you. I would like...
Well, you have, you, you're, you're asking, you're asking if we use taxpayer dollars for the police details that were involved in the contract.
And, and again, so the, the contract, the way the contract was negotiated...
We're gonna look into that for you.
All right, so you're gonna negotiate, look into the contract to make sure that...
We're gonna, we're gonna check the police budget to see how much we've spent on police details for that project.
What I would like done is the contract looked at and see if it was negotiated correctly. It looks to me like the vendor negotiated the contract, that we didn't, that contract wasn't written, but the contract that I see from, from, signed by Tim King, it doesn't look like we wrote that contract. It looked like the vendor wrote the contract.
It was that state bid. It went through state bid, so I don't know. Jim, you weren't involved in that, but...
Normally with the state bid contracts, and I think it was with this one as well, and I haven't completely researched it, but the state, the state itself does the contract negotiation with the vendors and they come up with specific prices for different items so that the towns don't have to. And this I know was on the state bid list and the contractor was on the state bid list. So, as long as they follow the state bid list contract requirements, then they're in compliance. Now, I haven't compared the two side by side, but, you know, from what I've seen in the past, if you're on the state bid list, they know what the process is, they know what the procedure is, they know what the billing requirements are, and they follow that because they do not wanna get off the state bid list, so, but I, but I can confirm that.
And they bid certified payroll, we've checked that.
Certified, not, you brought that up and I did not have the certified payrolls, but I will have them this week.
I, you know, that's another, again, it's another concern because this company that came into town is from New Hampshire?
They're from us.
All right, well, well, they're not from Westport, but they, they need to pay prevailing rate and our police details, because they're working for a municipality, which they should have, it should have been through the contract, I believe, will pay the rates if they're working for highway. So, I mean, everybody from out of town coming to work here is getting paid prevailing rate, but our police details, again, pay the lesser rate. And, you know, I just, I would really like the contract to be looked at to make sure it was done correctly. I mean, it's, it's a million dollar, I, I mean, I still, you know, I can understand being on a state bid list, but I, I don't know, everyone I was involved in, you know, you know, I've been a subcontractor on, on mass highway projects and, yeah, the, the GC's on the bid list, but he still has to bid the job. I mean, was the job bid?
Well, so Jim's gonna go look into that for you.
Okay, how do we bring this to conclusion? I mean, it's open-ended, we're not doing anything tonight.
Jim's gonna... I would follow up on the contract and get certified payrolls and get that information to you.
All right, thank you.
And we'll be discussing this again, I'm sure, along the way.
Thank you for coming.
Keith, good to see you. Thank you. Okay, good. Good, good discussion. I learned a lot tonight.
Is there something to look at for the budget discussion?
Uh, there is not.
Okay.
So, I'm up. So, the budget itself, like I said, will be presented at the next meeting of the Board of Selectmen. Just a couple of quick updates on the budget. Notification of final assessment certification was completed with the assessors department, that's why they were able to come here tonight, uh, for certification of the tax rate. They have come up with about six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars of new growth, which is, which is great. Previous years, we were, up until the last two years, we were averaging somewhere around five hundred thousand dollars for new growth, so picking up six seventy-five is, is very good. We estimated in the budget about four hundred thousand conservatively, so that's a two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar increase over what we had budgeted. We have free cash, um, should be finalized tomorrow locally and submitted to the state. We're still a little bit behind on filing that, but much further ahead than we've been the last couple of years. I think last year was January, this year is early December. Still looking to improve on that, but, uh, there were some discrepancies. Nicole and, um, Super Aiden have spent a tremendous amount of time over the last month and a half reconciling some of the, um, the issues, and they've, they've come to agreement on, on the, on the certification itself. So, once that gets submitted tomorrow, we should hear back in a week or two, and, um, hopefully, they'll certify our free cash, which, right now, we estimate just over three million dollars.
Wow.
Which is great. So, we do have, you know, we hear the bad news all the time about our budget, and there is plenty of bad news, and we'll get into that at the next meeting, but there's some good news as well. Our local receipts are in about eighty percent of, um, actual, we're at like ninety-six, ninety-seven percent, which left no leeway for error, or no leeway if one of the items happened to go down, such as excise tax. So, we, this year, we will have a little bit of, uh, room to play with that, maybe bump that up a little bit, which will bring in a little bit more revenue. Our Assessor overlay, a few years ago, was in the negatives, we, we have a healthy surplus in there now, so there, there are, you know, and, and we paid the price too, right? We haven't hired anybody on the town side over the last two or three years, our expense accounts haven't gone up, but because we've been doing that, and the Finance Committee and Town Meeting and the Board have been diligent on making sure we, we keep things tight, we've had some benefits from it. We need more benefits, but, but it's a start. Fees, uh, we're hoping to have a fee hearing next month, so all the departments have reviewed all their fees, I mean, they've made recommendations on, uh, a number of fees that should be increased. So, Paul was finishing, finishing that up, and that should be before the Board at the next meeting as well. So, the next meeting is the big meeting, we'll have a, a budget, a balanced budget, presented at the town meeting. We're still waiting on a number of items, uh, we don't have any of the state revenue yet, we don't know what the, um, assessments are for Diamond, Bristol-Aggie, those are the big ones. The insurance, we have an estimated cost, but we really haven't pinned down what our increase in health insurance is going to be. So, there's a number of outstanding items that we really need to wait, and we won't get some of those numbers until January, some of those numbers won't be finalized until after town meeting, so. One of the other big ones that we're waiting for is Chapter Seventy. We've been bumping up for the last ten years about fifty, sixty thousand dollars a year. Last year, because we were not at, we were, we left the minimum aid community category, we jumped up five hundred thousand. What I've been trying to determine is whether or not we go up five hundred thousand this year, or will we get back to our fifty thousand from last year's base? I got a couple of calls, and I haven't heard back yet, but, um, we're working on that. So, there's a couple of things that, uh, may help us a bit, but we still, it's still, town side's extremely tight, and the school side's going to be even tighter, so, that's where we are with the budget.
Thank you for those comments. I just want to add a little bit about the, the committee. The committee that doesn't really have a name, but as you know, we've had one meeting that included Select Board members, myself, Sean, and Jim, and others can partake if they wish, and the Finance Committee and the schools. To sit down, we sat down right here, it's an open meeting, we just cleared an open meeting, we put up a notice to make sure that we were, um, doing that properly, and, uh, we, we brainstormed, basically, is what it was. And there's another meeting now scheduled for January...
Third.
Third, yeah, right after the first of the year. Um, and we have been tasked with, uh, coming up with a five-year budget, or I'll call it a five-year financial plan, uh, and also a five-year capital plan. The five-year capital plan, Jim already made his first cut at this, this is really something we've always done, but not maybe with the same degree of sophistication, and it already shows what you might expect. We have extensive, extensive capital needs and limited funds, and that's always the case here. But, we're trying to lay out, and I have this first draft in front of me, we'll be talking about this on January third. It's, it's looking pretty good, we still have to analyze it and write a piece that goes with this. And that's, that's fairly, I wouldn't say cut and dried, but it's, it's easy, relatively easy to do. The, the financial plan or the five-year budget, by the way, these, both capital plan and fi- five-year capital plan and five-year budget are in Jim's goals for fiscal year twenty-four, so he can't get away from this. So, he would be the ultimate au- author of this, I, I would hope. But I don't, didn't want him to be left out there alone. So, I've had at, at this, come up with some thoughts as to what should go into a five-year plan, and I don't think what I've done so far is, is worthy of any publication, but it's just to stimulate conversation about, well, what are the assumptions? And it's laden with a lot of assumptions, like, the, the obvious assumption is, we're not planning on any override efforts over the next five years, uh, in case anybody's wondering. However, we do say, after that, things could change, and maybe it will be back on the table, but we, we're not planning on that. So, we're working with the money we have, Jim will be doing a, a revenue estimate, we're estimating costs, this is a lot of Excel spreadsheet, like the ones we used to do. But we will have, uh, in short order here, a draft of the five-year financial plan with narrative, and the five-year capital plan with narrative, and, uh, with all the other moving parts to it. That doesn't change what we're doing on the two thousand and twenty-five fiscal year budget, though. So, the two are sort of like running in tandem, but at some point, they, they do come together, because twenty-five is the first year of the five-year plan, obviously. So, we've got to get that right, otherwise, the rest of the plan will, will be off. So, we're, we're doing that, we, I don't, I don't have any conclusions for you so far, other than, as Jim has already said, things will be tight. So, that's what we're doing, and we're keeping up to date on that and doing some, some good work, I think. Jim, you want to add to that at all?
I think you've covered it.
Any questions, comments?
No, that's great, that you're doing that.
Not yet, not until you show us the numbers.
Okay, so, come to our next meeting on the, the eighteenth, and we'll have, uh, first cut at the, the budget, two thousand and twenty-five budget. Any further discussion on this? Okay, we're moving ahead now to item number seven, the Town Administrator Report.
So, I touched upon most of them, I just wanted to mention the town farm repairs, they're doing some trim work, they're doing some painting, they're doing some upkeep on the building. Tony Millam and Mike Walden have, um, spent quite a bit of time, it takes time to put these requests for, for bids out, um, and they put that out, they have a contract to audit, the Full Scope Contracting, Inc., and they're going to start work soon, that'll be through CPC funding, CPA funding. The other thing I wanted to mention, I mentioned the fees, short-term rentals, we talked about earlier, so that'll be going through the zoning process with the Planning Board, so anybody that is concerned about short-term rentals, either in favor or opposed, should contact the Planning Board, and I'm sure those regulations will be, draft regulations will be on the website in a couple of weeks, if they're not up already. And then the last thing, and I, I think the chairman mentioned this, is the Candidates' Guide, Kristen Stinson from the Town Clerk, to get a comprehensive guide for any candidates for all the positions, given a brief description of what the positions do, or the Boards do, as well as the filing deadlines and, uh, the requirements for filing. It's actually a great little document, it's one of those things that you think about, why wasn't it done thirty years ago? It's on the website, she has it available in her office, if anybody's interested.
Yeah, look at that, it's a good piece of work, there's a lot of information there. Okay, any questions or comments in Jim's report? If not, then we'll move ahead to Manny, the Approval of Minutes, looking at only one November twentieth, I don't know if they're ready or not.
Yeah, I approve those minutes.
Say.
Motion made, and second to discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
I abstain due to absence.
Okay, so that's, uh, four in favor, and none opposed, and one abstention. Got that, Jim?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the report on the bill warrant, Anne?
Yep, it was signed, it was a small one, no big, um, loan checks or anything like that, uh, one small voiding check.
Okay, great, thank you for doing that. Uh, the next item is Selectmen Liaison Committee Reports and Suggestions for Future Agenda Discussion Actions, we'll start with Anne.
Um, I just had a, um, affordable housing, we put together our, um, presentation for CPC, and that's happening, uh, next couple of weeks, and I think that was all the time. We didn't have any long-term billing, did we?
We should look at the, if I could, the chair, we should look through the affordable housing on tiny homes for, um, maybe a section off of Route Six, they're coming out some really cool layouts.
They found a couple pieces, um, that we're looking at, but again, it's, we're not going to be able to do much with them until the infrastructure you guys are working on goes through, because it's, the septic's are messing up.
We've already got units that are kind of like, uh, tiny homes behind borders and stuff.
But that helps us if...
For affordable housing.
Well, not only that, for the grants that we're trying to chase for this infrastructure, if we can have, like, say, hey, this...
If we get this, we get this, yeah. No, I mean, there is, there is, there's, um, two pieces of property, one could be, one is linked into some, um, land, I think it's, um, it, there's question on whether it's too wet, but, um, so a lot of that wet stuff goes away, right? When you...
Well, we were actually, I was, we were actually looking at veterans' housing and whatnot, it might work, I mean, it doesn't have to be just town property, too, you could get a contractor to do it, as long as we can...
There, there's a few small properties that may or may not be for sale, but are definitely something that we may be able to purchase four or five together and get a big piece, which is kind of what we're looking at now. And that's all in the presentation.
Well, I, I know the one behind Port is that, that got resold twice.
Yeah, I know, and I was talking, I was talking on the older one.
And they're, they're proposing something like that there, too, so...
Okay, anything more?
The original one, it came before us.
Yeah, I think a lot of affordable housing issues do, I mean, they do, they do go away a little bit if, if the infrastructure thing gets done.
Yep, we have options.
Sean?
Uh, really, the only committee is the Internet Advisory Committee, so we talk about that.
Okay, uh, I don't have anything that I do attend on a continual basis. Council on Aging, they're working on a strategic plan, they meet every month, and, uh, we'll be working on that for a while, and at some point, we'll probably present to the Select Board. The Audit Committee scheduled a January meeting, we expect by that time, the audit to be completed. I think it's going to meet that timeframe, so we put a tentative date up for a, an Audit Committee meeting, and that's all I have. Steve?
And you, I'll leave you to put this CERDA hat on for our next meeting, because supposedly the buses are going to be free, and I've had a few people ask us if that includes Westport, which I can't imagine why it wouldn't, but supposedly the whole CERDA loop's free, because we just got a clarification from CERDA on that, and just so we can, uh, maybe we'll announce at our next meeting, uh, that Restport residents could utilize the bus for free for, I think it's the first six months of next year.
I was going to say, what's the time? I've not heard about that.
Yeah, it's a long time. CERDA's offering free bus service from January through June next year.
And this is not just weekend service?
Supposedly all the loops. No, supposedly all the loops. So, if you could just find that for us?
I can find it out.
Make sure we're included, it's just not some kind of intercity grant, that would be great. We had the, um, Infrastructure Committee, um, we're going to have a major meeting on the twenty-fourth of January, we're going to decide on what to bring to town meeting. There is a major, um, project on the, the Board that we're going to decide if we're going to, I'll, uh, phrase it the right way. Phase one, we're thinking is going to be all of Route Six, but there's separate contracts within, one, two, and three, so we're going to decide if we just want to go to the eighty-eight bridge for like seven and a half million, or if we want to go for the whole stretch of Route Six, would be like thirty-two million. We're going to get final numbers on the grants that we went for, but we were just, we were not approved for one of the grants that we just, uh, went for. Keep in mind, when we go for the grants, they're, they're kind of stretching it as much as they can to try to make this work, and the, the nuts and bolts of it is, they want a, a, a company in place that, to bring the infrastructure to town. Since we don't have, we're not locked into a major corporation or any kind of major project, like I always bring up, Dartmouth brought the jail, that's why they got some of their infrastructure, um, it's a lot tougher to get grants. You know, if we, if we were to put up a big housing project or something, again, an anchor project, we'd have a better chance, but because we're trying to keep the character as much as possible in town, it, it's tougher to get it. Do people want to do like we do with open space? It's a little bit bigger for debt exclusion, but we're, uh, we don't have to go crazy having to accept things that we don't necessarily want, major, major projects. So, that's what we're going to decide, January twenty-fourth, it's probably going to be at the high school, because, um, Manny and some of the business, business, uh, owners on Route Six, they go to our meetings, they're probably going to do flyers, it's probably going to be a pretty big thing. So, again, on that, so that, that was the main thing, the bus, that, um, and we'll have to, Jim will get it for us, but we need to know opera numbers on that, so, we know what we're doing when we go to town meeting, too, because that'll probably be one of the biggest questions. Well, what do we got for opera money to help us, uh, with our tax dollars going into that major project on Route Six?
Okay. Manny?
Pretty much what, what Steve had said, we had, we had a good infrastructure, it was like, we had a lot of public input. I, I think it's going to be a hundredfold for the twenty-fourth, and, and, um, I'm, I'm hoping that we can get some of the, like, that shortcut study brought into it, too, so, like, the residents just don't understand what's, what's happening or what we're looking to do, and there's a lot of confusion, kind of like, you know, not to go back to the broad end, it's just like confusion, they don't understand what's going on, so we're trying to get that clarified and, um, move forward with it. Other than, other than that, one of the other things, um, that I, I did notice is, well, you know, for matters on the next meeting for discussion, um, we are the Water Commissioners, so we have a couple of issues right now, and, and I was, I, I took the review of our contract with Four River. So, it expires this year, and it, it, what, what it does is it, it continues every other year and can be distinguished, I think, in six months, like, by June, if you, if they decide they want to get, they want to give us service or buy water from them, they could stop, if they notified us in June, same thing with us, so... I think we need to get into some talks with, with Four River and start moving forward with this. Not to mention, like, Jim, I know you're working on all the stuff with Roger on the grants and everything, but, but, you know, a couple of people from, you know, Paul Furlan's offered up to, to try to help, um, Terry Sullivan's even, you know, says, anything he can do and, and try to teach us, um, how they've been successful with the grants, like, just take a little look at us, and, you know, they, they got the olive branch out there, and...
Now, on this, this water question, you've been communicating on this, and there's a meeting set up, right?
Yeah, we just, we just set it up today, I was going to ask you, uh...
See that?
So, we got a meeting set up with the mayor for January, it was almost eighth or ninth, Tuesday, if you're available, and that's, to go over a few things. I sent Paul Furlan a copy of the waterline agreement about three weeks ago. About four, five years ago, Terry Sullivan had, uh, drawn up a draft amendment, which, which had some things that would benefit Westport long-term, but it was never, never accepted or changed, so we're still working off one of the older agreements.
Yep.
Um, in the agreement, it has, if we use a certain amount of water, that rate would be reduced. Um, so, so we're looking for something like that in the contract, we want to make Four River aware of, obviously, what we're planning on Route Six, which they are, but we just want to make the administration aware, and, just a couple. We also have the billing that has, um, we sent that back to Four River September, I believe, of last year, and, um, that is a, and the pilot, yes.
And anything about that problem is, is miscommunication, you know, just certain procedures that we're, we're not following, so, you know, not on purpose, but, but trying to trace that out.
Yeah, those go back years, over the last year and a half, we've, the bills have been paid every month on time.
Oh, I know ones that came up.
And reconciled with Four River every month. I think the right, the old stuff hasn't been, right now, it's in it.
Yeah, it was a common procedure, flushers, go, go fine, I mean, so that shouldn't have been in, probably just going to be a year. Anyway, we're working on this.
We did all the years, too, didn't we?
Yeah, we, we did, yeah, we did all the meetings last year in Slough, which is great, because now we just drive by, it takes us less than an hour, you know, and it's worth to pay the two, uh, uh, which was...
Okay, anything else?